Now we're dealing with the zoning appeals issue, all right?
Correct.
We're still in Article Two.
What section do you have?
Page eight.
Page J?
Eight.
Eight.
It's Section two dash five oh two, and this would go at the end of subsection three. And it really just adopts the standard appellate review standards, standard criteria that are used. Because what we're doing is not making most of these appeals what's called de novo. They're based on the record below, so I'll read it and you'll see.
All right.
In, so quote, "In order to reverse, amend, modify, or remand for amendment, modification, or rehearing, the decision of the lower board or official, the zoning appeals board shall find that the board or official below did not comply with any of the following: one, provide procedural due process; two, observe the essential requirements of law; or three, base its decision upon substantial competent evidence. The decision on the appeal shall be set forth in writing and shall be promptly mailed to all parties to the appeal." So that's a standard judicial review of quasi-judicial decisions by Circuit Court Appellative Division, and it's traditionally used for appeals to local government.
It sets a fair standard to substantiate the appeal.
Yes, and it, it, it's based on the concept that you don't necessarily need to have a whole new hearing in front of the governing body to make a decision. Some of these hearings last for hours, as you well know.
Yes.
So it's made on the record, and only the parties and their attorneys are allowed to make a presentation.
Counsel, let me ask you a question. With regards to the Board of Adjustment.
Yes, sir.
If you disagreed with that opinion, your next step in the process was to take it to the courts. Is that correct? Oh, we are.
Yeah, that's the way it is now.
Okay, now, we're changing that? That's exactly, that's what you're changing, so the appellate would be the city council?
There would be an interim appeal to the city council, sitting as a zoning appeals board.
Zoning board, okay.
Correct.
Let me, let me bring up a hypothetical.
And what that does, because Miami Beach had a similar process, though it didn't do it for all the boards, it, it provides an opportunity for the resolution of disputes without having to hire an attorney and file briefs or, or suit. So it's really a benefit to both residents and developers.
Yeah, well, you know, that, that's the way it used to be in the city.
Okay.
Okay, it used to be that the city council would be the, in other words, if the Board of Adjustment turned somebody down, they then had the city council to go to as an, as an appeal. These, some time ago, the city council changed that to what it is now. So you're basically reverting to what it used to be. I believe Mayor Burns here was part of that process, I think.
Yeah, actually, my first reaction to it was, the city council really wants to do this? Well, I guess we'll find out.
I have a question as well. Those three criterias, is it, was it and, it has to meet all those, or is it or?
No, or.
Or, okay.
Either or, pick one.
Yes.
They've got to find fault somewhere.
Yes.
If they don't find fault, then the decision stands.
Right.
Okay, that's, that's fair and reasonable. All right, Chair will entertain a motion to approve.
So move.
No, I'm sorry, that's, that's, public hearing on Section Two is closed. This is all commission discussion. It's Section Two. John, it's Section Two. Yes, but it's Section Two.
So, in other words, you're saying that once you close the public hearing, you can have, you can have nineteen more issues that the public's not allowed to talk about?
Oh, John, there'll be another hearing on this yet. This isn't the end of the road. This, this document is still in a serious state of revision.
Are you gonna have another hearing on this?
Oh, there will be. I think staff already has that scheduled.
No, excuse me, but you don't. You don't. You just opened a new subject after you closed the public hearing, and you're not allowing the public to speak about it. You understand my point?
John, I understand, but the, the way that we set, we set the ground rules was that any item in, in the article, in other words, we, when we closed a public hearing, before we closed it, we said, is there any other issues that need to be addressed to Article Two? That meant the, in entirety, any, any subject within that article.
Why don't you ask your attorney if I'm allowed to speak on a new issue?
So, Mr. Chair. To be fair, and maybe we should introduce such other amendments that are not in the draft before we open the public hearing, so people do have an opportunity to comment.
Of course, we don't know that we get to them until we've had the decision.
I'll sit down, I'll sit down, but what you're doing is denying the public the right to speak on a new issue.
I was gonna say, since we didn't do that here, and we're learning as we go, maybe we should give him two minutes to comment on it.
I would go along with that.
All right, at the, at the, for the pleasure of the board, John will give you two minutes. All right, John has declined. You'll, I'll give you two minutes only.
And to this item, correct?
Yes, and only to this item, because it's not getting any earlier.
Kevin Burns, my address is on the record already. There was a time when you wanted to appeal the Board of Adjustment, it went to the city council. It was political nightmare. You take it, you appeal from the Board of Adjustment, it goes to the circuit court. It's worked well for the last five or six years. Some people find that process a little cumbersome to have to go to court.
It is just inexpensive.
Yes. You will now turn around and have another zoning board look at the same information, and you will have another set. So what happens if they don't like their appeal at that zoning board? It goes back to the court. Let's take the politics, let's take the, everything out that is happening. We reviewed this in two thousand nine, really, really looked at it. Do we want city councils? Do we want a zoning appeal board being the final say rather than the courts? Take it, you, the boards make their decision, and then you let the courts decide whether somebody erred or not. That's, you know, we did it both ways. I think it's been working well. I know there is, again, cumbersome, takes a little bit more time, but I think it's a lot cleaner for the last eight years. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mike.
I'd like to, since we let Kevin talk, and since John Dela Gloria was our city attorney, maybe we can convince him?
I'm not gonna persuade, John. He doesn't need to be persuaded by me. He had every opportunity, and he chose not to, and he willingly sat down. And now he's willingly stood up.
I just wanted to point out that once upon a time, when the council had the jurisdiction to deal with variances, they didn't want to do that. It was something that went on the agenda, and it went over and over and over again about mostly the same issues. So they kind of got rid of that process. My good friend, Mr. Held, correctly pointed out that perhaps they don't want to hear these things. But apart from that, what I was going to say is you're injecting politics back into these issues, and you shouldn't be doing that. That's what the courts are for. And if you send it up to the council, and the council likes people or doesn't like people, you're injecting those politics, and you shouldn't do it.
Point well taken, thank you, John.
You're welcome.
So, Mr. Chair, actually, looking at this a little further, it actually should go in Article Three, where the procedures for the zoning appeals board are, and not Article Two. So I, I asked to, for indulgence, to roll it over.
Withdraw for the moment, and we'll revisit it in Article Three.
Yes.
I will. Yes, well, but nonetheless, we, the point's made. All right, so if that's, if that's where we're at, you're gonna take that out, and we'll address that in a moment. The chair now calls for a motion to approve Article Two.
Vote for approval of Article Two.
All right, Mr. Enters to approve.
Yeah. The amendments, no, we're discussing, I'm sorry, sir.
All right, second?
Second.
Mike McGee, you're made seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
We're now ready for Article Three, and we can have this discussion again now in Article Three, but John's already made his point, and we'll, we'll reference that as we go along here. And I, I think the, the absence of politics is certainly an important issue. We need to try and keep the city council focused on their job and not invite them to get into everybody else's neighborhood where necessary.
Mr. Chairman, if a new item is brought up during Article Three, would we be able to allow additional public input?
If there's something necessary to be said that has to be made.
So that we don't, and, we apologize for that, Mr. Dela Gloria, I do, for.
Listen, John loves these things. Don't apologize too much, he'll inflate his ego, my goodness, the man will be intolerable.
I've known him for too long.
Oh, yes, John, you're most welcome, thank you, we acknowledge that, you know? After all, you, you really were a distinguished attorney to this board for so many years. We, we just, we just love having fun with you when you're here. All right, now we're into Article Three, this is, uh, let's see, we have quite a lot of diagrams on this one, boy, does this go on.
Right, this is, this is your development review. The changes in this article are really more procedural. One of the key things that was lacking was clarification of submittal requirements. So we outlined those, because if you don't know ahead of time what you need to submit, there's always questions as, oh, why did they make me do that? So we codified that, those submittal requirements. The other thing that we did is we also outlined what the review standards would be for site plan approval, and had some really great conversations about substantial compliance. When you have a development order, and you don't do every tiny little piece, you show, you should have an opportunity to say that, you know, it's substantially in compliance with the development order. So we added that clarification to this. One of the other things that we did was we worked a little bit on the public noticing requirements. Specifically, we wanted to make sure that it met Florida statute, because there are some very specific public noticing requirements outlined in Florida statute. We looked at the appeals process very closely, and as, that we will obviously be revisiting the zoning appeals board, which really, as Mr. Held said, does go here. The subdivision regulations that you had were very light, and they didn't really comport with Miami-Dade County, which you're supposed to do so. So we had considerable amendments in there that now meet that, now meet the Miami-Dade County code, which is absolutely critical for you to do. And once again, we made all those little editorial changes throughout, as I mentioned earlier.
And how would you title Article Three for the purpose of the public discussion tonight?
It's, the title is Development Review.
Development Review, all right. So these are development review procedures. At this time, we'll open the public hearing as to Article Three. Anyone wishing to speak to Article Three is invited to step forward. We'll adopt John's comments into Article Three to save time, and Kevin's comments as well. Anyone else wishing to speak on items for Article Three?
Good evening, Kevin Burns, my address is on record. Had a question for staff for clarification, and a particular situation, since staff has the purpose of these LDRs is to incorporate events that have happened or may happen in the city. In Section three dash two oh nine, it's moving a building. I've been coming across people who would like to preserve historically significant buildings in our city. They're willing to donate them to the city, willing to relocate them on a different portion of their properties. I'm looking at a structure, just a small structure, that's three hundred square feet. It's from nineteen thirteen, the building was built. Don't want to give the location away. The city has been talking, in the Historical Society, he's been talking about saving some of these structures, if they're sound. But when you move these structures to a new location, whether it's donated to the city at one of the local parks, a building that's over fifty years old, maybe almost a hundred years old, you now have to come up to the current standard building codes. It makes it unfeasible. The developers aren't gonna waste their time, they're gonna bulldoze down the building, and that is it. We've lost structures in this city that are seventy-five, they're significant. If we can, and, and this, I think this provision says, you have to meet all the, the, the current codes where you're gonna move to. Since Florida statute protects cheeky huts that are built by the Mikkasukis and the Seminoles, is there a provision in there that we can exempt historical or structures, particularly wooden structures that are over fifty, even seventy-five years old, so that we can at least try to relocate them? But you don't have to come up with the windows and the shutters, you don't have to come up with different roofing material. Is there some way to, to protect the history, have a sound foundation, of course, but being able to, you know, work this both ways? Because there's some really great old houses that you may not notice them until it's too late, and I happen to be working with a piece of property now, and really gonna try to save this structure because of the family history in North Miami, and I believe it's almost ninety years old, made out of Dade County pine. I wish my house was as strong as this particular little cracker box of a house, and, but if you go to move it, even if it's on your own property or the adjacent lot, a whole lot of new standards kick in. Then, there's other things in this one hundred and twenty-five page section, and as you discuss, I hope that the chair will allow if something significant comes up that we can still come up here again. Thank you very much.
I'll think about that, Kevin.
Houston, eleven fifty Northeast, one twenty-third Street. And I don't know specifically what this article is about, but I would like to piggyback on Kevin Burns. I happen to know that there is also some other properties of significant historical value in North Miami, and at this time, North Miami does not have any historical preservation society or anything to protect these historical buildings. And one of those buildings happens to be the first mayor of North Miami's home. And, and things like this is our history, and I think it should be preserved. Thank you.
All right, anyone else wishing to speak to this article? Oh, I, I, we were just waiting, John, you know? All right, what the chair will do, will, we will suspend this portion of the public hearing, reserving the right to reopen it if a given issue should come up in this article. All right, now let's move on to commission discussion. First, the point is well taken on historic preservation. How do we address that concept when we've never had an historic preservation board? I understand the, what's, what's being asked about here. We, we've not in our city had a way of declaring something historic, much less than exempting it from building code. That seems to me is, is something that...
I mean, to answer, I mean, this, the first question from Mayor Burns, that section three dash two oh nine was added to the code, because currently, the LDR doesn't have any provision addressing moving of buildings. And then I do understand his point, but then again, we still can have, maybe for building, if you're moving to, within the same lot, we don't have to meet the current codes. Then if you have to move to another lots, maybe to a variance process, at least have, you know, the Board of Adjustment, or whichever board, body, I mean, have a jurisdiction over that, instead of leaving up to staff, and that can be addressed. As far as, you know, the building, like you say, we don't have an historical preservation board here. I mean, I mean, yes, there are older buildings in the city, quote unquote, but, you know, they have to be designated as such, you know, if they, in, when you're in Florida, registered, national register, you know, it's even better. We do have a few, and as you know, Tanya, our director can attest to that, but we, we don't actually, we don't have a board, you know, to do, to do that in the city. And that's something, maybe you have to go back to Article Two and to create search board to address those issues in the city.
Mr. Chair, may I?
Yes, you may, go ahead.
This is not quite what this says. What this says is that if you remove the building off of this lot, any building that goes back there has to conform with the provisions. This is primarily to address if you're moving a non-conforming, maybe a historic structure somewhere else, and it, and the, and the lot is, is non, and what's, that was there now is non-conforming. Well, that doesn't mean that you can rebuild on that lot something that's still non-conforming. It now says that any new structure that goes there has to meet the code. It's a little awkward, I will tell you, that the language is a little awkward, that maybe you could use a little tweaking, but the intent was not at all to say a historic structure has to be, you know, has to be brought up to compliance. So if it's a little unclear, we can do, as staff, we can do a little tweak.
Maybe we can take a look at that, because short of creating an historic preservation board, at worst, that, that function could be assigned to an existing board. Let's take a look at some language options and see if maybe it can be clarified, because I understand rebuilding on the lot, but then now you've got this historic building, you've moved it, now what do you do with it? You're gonna plop it down somewhere, and so how do we clarify that based on its historic designation, however we get to that, it doesn't have to be brought up to code necessarily, depending upon how it's used?
Well, you do have a non-conforming use and structure section of the code that does have a major flexibility now on what happens with non-conforming structures, and whether they are destroyed or changed in some fashion. It no longer, you no longer have your fifty percent rule. It's, look, if it's destroyed or removed, and maybe we can add something to that section, Nixon, that, that addresses your historic structures, because they could perhaps be non-conforming, but it may not be. So it may be that we could add something to that, but...
They would be non-conforming if they don't meet current building codes, yes.
Mr. Chair.
So, yes, Mr. Held?
So the, the way the county's land development regulations work is that they have jurisdiction, the county has jurisdiction over the unincorporated and the incorporated areas for historic preservation. And the only way this city would be able to exercise jurisdiction over historic structures to the exclusion of the county would be to adopt an ordinance that meets the minimum standards of the county as set forth in the county code. To the extent, for example, in Miami Beach, we, we had adopted an ordinance that provided for owner consent, and the county sued the city to remove that. So they're very serious about the adoption of standards to allow local government jurisdiction over that.
So effectively, in, in the case that Kevin Burns has cited, the owner in question would actually go to the county to have the building approved as an historic structure.
Yes.
Once they get that approval, then they pick up the building over here, they drop it down over there.
Well, moving is a separate issue, whether it can be moved, and, and they would have to ask for approval from the county to move it.
But if they can't move it?
The county would probably deny that request.
No.
They would have to give sufficient assurance that it could be moved in order to allow, to have the county historic preservation board approve moving it.
We would accept it as a non-conforming use? Well, that wouldn't even matter.
Well, first they have the termites feasible, but you understand now, Kevin, that issue has to be addressed at the county level.
You know...
And once you get that historic designation, and assuming you get it because you can move it, then we can come back and talk about what would happen later.
So, are, my question is, are, Mr. Burns, was there, was it their intention to move the building, or just the whole, deemed it as a historic preservation was the main concern?
The intention is actually donate it to the, I'm speaking out of term, but I'm gonna say, in theory, donate it to the North Miami Historical Association to use as a functioning building within a city park. If not...
Without moving it?
So, no, you would have to move it, because the property will be developed.
Okay.
And so if you go and get it designated as a historic structure, and then the county says you can't move it, then it's, then you open up a whole bigger can of worms, and, and that's not what the intent, the intent is to try to save a very small structure, move it, make use of it, and life goes on without being too, too complicated.
But of course, we don't know if the county's gonna deny that. If it's, if the justification is shown for that designation, and you have the engineering study to prove the feasibility, you can move it, well then, you're, you're two-thirds of the way home.
Is, is, is somebody not permitted in North Miami under North Miami codes, not allowed to take a structure regardless of the age, and move it to a different piece of property under city, North Miami building codes, and to a piece of property that is permitted by the city?
I can't, he's talking specifically to the building code, Nixon.
The current building code, if I wanted to pick up a building, regardless if it was historical or whatever, and say, I'm moving it fifty feet or a hundred feet up the road to my bigger location, would I be allowed to get a permit, or somebody get a permit through the city of North Miami? Does our code address that?
I mean, this would be all land development, not building codes, with building codes has to do with the site, it's site-specific, and that's why, you know, we, it put that section in the code, because currently, there's no such, you know, provision anywhere in the city's code of ordinance addressing that. And, and then to go back to the historical designation, yes, I just remember, when the county came up with that historic preservation ordinance, it has given, they're giving cities, you know, a certain time to opt out. The city of North Miami didn't opt out. So right now, and, and to some of the points I would made earlier, any historical designation, and we did that for the fountains, we make a recommendation to council, and then they had a, a resolution, and we have to take it to the, to their board at the county, they have to approve it. And it's a very, there, there are a lot of criterias, and I don't think now, if you try to move a historical building, designated building, from its location, I don't think, you know, that would still make it a historical structure at this point.
So you first have to get it declared historic.
Exactly.
Then you have to get permission to move it.
Which also ties it to the environment where it was originally built. It's not just the structure, but also the whole...
And maybe historic because of where it is.
Exactly.
Maybe you guys can take a look at the Bonnet House, and the changes that were made with the Bonnet House in Fort Lauderdale. So maybe you can consult with the Parasepe in Fort Lauderdale, and ask them what they do with the Bonnet House, because if I'm not mistaken, there are some changes made on the property, as far as the, the infrastructure, the property line, so on and so forth. So, and I just, I just visited the Bonnet House, so I, I think that would be a, a great place to start with.
I don't think it was moved.
That's true.
There were certain parts of it, from what I recall, that were either moved or adjusted with the, within, I guess, the property lines or within city lines. And then there were some roadways that were created for some new infrastructure that is adjacent to the property.
Yes, but the roadway isn't the building, and that's, and we're really dealing with the building.
No, what I'm saying is that the property itself was...
Was altered. Yeah, it's a different situation. We, we don't really have quite the answers that Kevin is looking for tonight, but I think the question should come up, and I think the board would be very happy to readdress recommendations on a series of issues that would affect the LDRs to deal with that.
And I would add, you know, I mean, that doesn't include us to have like a local designation. It doesn't mean that as much cloud as of one that is registered, you know, with the state and even the national register, but at least we can have a local designation addressing some of those buildings, you know, that we currently have in the city, without a full, quote unquote, historical designation.
The question is a fair question, and the historic preservation board could certainly use an historic building, even if not in its original location, but the question is gonna be, how do we get there? I don't feel comfortable trying to wade into that tonight, given what we now are looking at, but I feel very comfortable trying to address that at a future planning commission meeting, if, if Mr. Burns and staff would like to work on something with Mr. Held, and come back and say, okay, for an historic preservation board, you'd have to do this and this, and then we could work in the language on the applicable sections to exempt it from code if necessary. And I think that, but, but to try and take that on tonight, I think would be ill-advised. But I think it's a valid point, and staff, Mr. Held, and Mr. Burns should have a meeting to resolve those issues and outline how we can go forward on that point. Nobody's ever asked us before, and since we've never been asked, we, we don't have any point of reference to go by. So we're not denying the request, Kevin, what we're saying is, that's a little too much to take on right now, but if you can... much to take on right now, but if you can coordinate a meeting, and I think staff would be very happy to try and work with you, as with Mr. Held and our, our city plan, we could come up with a series of steps that would, could be adopted or recommended to the city council to, for incorporation into these LDRs, before the whole process is wrapped up. There's another meeting, another month or something on this, and, and a series of things will happen, and this plan can always be modified, it's not being cut in stone. And as these needs arise, we can work that language and drop it back into this. I think there's a way to do that. I, I think maybe that's taking on too much for tonight. But with the board's permission, I think we, we should encourage that kind of a meeting, and see what comes out of it, and be prepared to revisit that as a separate issue before the planning commission at a future time. Do we, do we have a general consensus on that? All right, without a motion made, you understand what we're suggesting. This would be time for negotiation after the fact. All right, do we have any other major issues in Article Three that we need to be concerned with? I know many of you have made a few notes, this is your time. Mr. Ernst, you may go first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had two items I'd like to address to staff. It's more of an inquiry and a, and kind of a clarification. The first item is on page fifty-seven, section three dash eight oh one. Three dash, I'm sorry, three dash eight oh two, plats and platting, I'm sorry, page fifty-seven, again, page fifty-seven. A whole new item has been added to the ordinance there that you would see, receding that, is the ordinance twelve seventy-eight, section three dash eight-two. Everybody find that?
Mm-hmm.
Language has, was added in there, which I wasn't quite clear on. If you'll notice, on paragraph two, where it says that subdivisions involved consist only of the dedication of roadways and complexes, et cetera, I skipped down to two, because I was not clear as to why, and to be the sub, be subdivided, is to be divided into no more than six lots. Can we, can we get a clarification on that?
So that language ties into the end of the first sentence after the number three dash eight oh two, which reads, whenever land is subdivided, a plat must be recorded, except that the recording of a plat will not be required if, and two, the land to be subdivided is divided into no more than six lots. So it's not a restriction, it's an exemption, that if you're subdividing into six lots or less, you don't have to replat, you can do a waiver of plat, right?
And, and then actually, and to Mr. Gary's point, this is not just new language, this is basically clarification of existing language, because the, the current language is convoluted, because there's no distinction in the current code between tentative plat and waiver of plat. It's all bunched up in one section, and this actually mirrors, you know, the county language. And then, because for a waiver of plat, it could be no more than six lots. If you have seven lots, then you have to do a full plat, you have to do a tentative plat, then a final plat. But those are the criteria already established in the county code, because which is what we do, I mean, yes, we have to make our LDR, but our approval is merely ceremonial. I mean, the county ultimately approves, you know, a subdivision of land. So, but this is actually from their code, from the county code, it mirrors, you know, what in their code.
All right, so just, that's kind of what I was trying to see, that we were, we're just verifying what they, they set as the standards, and nothing new.
Do we have, you had another point you wanted to bring up on this? When we finish with Article Three, we're going to take a break. I think it's going to be necessary, so...
Page, page one thirty, if I could.
Yes, I'll let you go there.
It should be a quick question on this. Impact fees, regarding impact fees.
That's going to be redone, I brought that up myself.
All right, my question was, with regards to that, all of that was, was eliminated. But then, my, my take is that the city council would have arbitrary decision as to setting those, those fees?
No.
Okay.
Impact fees are, are done very carefully through a specific impact fee study to justify your fees, as required by Florida statute, how that is done. The reason the schedule is deleted out of here is your impact fees are supposed to be revisited at a minimum of every five years. Supposed to be tied to your capital improvement program, because you have to tie, it's called a dual rational nexus test. Not only are your fees based upon certain capital projects that maintain a level of service standard, whether it's a park, or school, a library, whatever your impact fees are, that's the reason it's tied to your capital improvement program. So when you put your fee in, in here like that, you're, every time the fee gets updated, you've got to go in and update your code again. It's easier to just defer to the schedule, which sits outside of the code, because the schedule itself is going to be established through the study, which will tell you, in order to pay for these capital projects during the next five-year plan, it's, you need to collect X amount of dollars per whatever types of use it is.
Okay, so the city council is the only one that would have to say as to, they would look at that schedule, no other board or, or planning? The planning department would not look at that fee schedule?
No, 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 that's not what that means. The fee schedule is like any fee schedule you have in the, when you go to collect, it's usually collected through the building department, right? They have a fee schedule, so when you come in as a developer or business owner, you're expanding your business, or you're building a new home, the fee schedule, this is the fee you pay.
Right.
So...
But my question, I guess, was, we're adding language in section A, on page one thirty, section thirteen, three dash fourteen oh seven.
Correct. Because it...
It says, impact fee schedule that may, that may be adjusted by the city council from time to time.
Correct, because they're the ones who adopt the ordinances, and this is done via ordinance. So the city council adopts the ordinance, so it's by the fee that the city council adjusts from time to time through the ordinance.
So that, that will be by ordinance, not by, not in the LDR?
Correct. And it will be, the LDR... Correct, the entire thing goes into your code of ordinances. The fee schedule itself is part of the study, and you'll have these fee schedules, but you don't want it sitting in your code here where the fee schedule may change every five years.
Yeah, I think, I think my experience has been that, by, like you said, by having that being a separate document, anyone who needs to look at the impact fees, they'll look through here, and they'll say, okay, let me go look at the rate schedule, but then that rate schedule can be one single document that can be easily picked up by potential...
That's right.
...or something, look at it, calculate the fee, and then if we choose as a city to actually adjust the rates, because we see that the market's doing very well here in the city, we can do another, you know, impact fee study, change the schedule, you know, to something higher, hopefully, and then it doesn't have to go back into the code, is that...
And then, as a point of clarification, I mean, we're talking about impact fees, you know, fees collected for wood, for police, I mean, it's all the fees impacted that the city actually collects. We only collect for police, for parks, and for libraries, and wood impact fees are collected by the county. When a building permit comes and then they go to them, that's when those fees are assessed.
All right, so let me ask this question, if I may interject. When we do the five-year capital plan every year, it will, the fee schedule be incorporated into that five-year plan? Will we see that and say, okay, this is just what we need to support that five-year plan?
No, that's not quite how the study works. The study actually is something that's undertaken separately as a specific fee requirement as, because the dual rational nexus test. It says, one, where whoever you are charging has to get a benefit from it, and two, it has to be sort of, some sort of rational connection between what it's going to pay for. So when you do your capital projects, when you do your capital plan, it's up to city staff to say, we need now to do a new impact fee study.
So that way, if we come up with anything, I don't know, a new capital improvement project that the city's going to need funding for, that potential applicants can benefit from, at least by doing another study, it can readjust the impact fees.
And, and then, yeah, that's also tied to the level of service, because, you know, one of the purpose of concurrency is to make sure that, you know, public services are available at the time of development, are concurrent, and then so that's why, you know, if you come into the city, and then you're going to impact our woods, you're going to police, you know, in parks if it's residential development, so you, it's about paying your fair share of, of that. And then that's how, you know, we impose those impacts, and then like Debbie said, there's, a study has to be done that actually links those two, and then, you know, make it in a, in an objective way, not just wittily.
I, I think I can understand that.
Clear.
Yeah, all right. Mr. Held, do you have a...
So just a, a general comment, I, I know previously it was explained that there are typographical changes that you have, may not have seen. I have also been reviewing the, the text, and I've been making changes that I would not call policy changes, but they are more than typographical changes. They, they are clarifying language, they're strengthening language, but I don't think that if, none of them, and I just went through them, presents a major policy issue that you would be concerned about.
All right. Then, does any member of this commission have any other issues on Article Three? Bob, I know you take copious notes.
No, I don't, I mean, most of the issues, most of the issues I had were street number, all the, all the...
Typographical.
Typographical.
Typographical stuff that...
Jason, anything on your end? No, Kenny?
I just want to ask one question, I have to give it to you. Okay, just a clarification, we cannot change, we cannot suggest to the council on page one oh eight.
On page one oh eight, okay, number three, B. I asked this question yesterday, with section three dash one zero zero seven, city council review and decision, and approval of, and where I'm going at is, approval of zoning, map changes shall require an affirmative vote of four members of the city council. We cannot change that, or we cannot suggest that be changed.
It's, it's complaint policy, and then the zoning code or the LDR have to implement, you know, that, has to be consistent with the actual language in the complaint. And, and for now, the complaint, any zoning map change, you know, increasing density, changing the text of the comprehensive zoning requires a supermajority.
So this has to match that language?
Yeah, as simple as that.
So the comp, the comp plan, that, that's it, this is in stone for the next...
Hard law, until the complaint is changed, if it's changed.
Okay, now let me just ask one other, you cannot change the comp plan now?
No, no, that's a different process.
That's it, so we're locked into this for seven?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, and you guys, again, you're going to handle the, the street changes.
But it does come up, we will review the comp plan in some many years.
All right, thank you very much.
Or somebody asks for text amendment, I mean, to the complaint.
Let me see, that's section, okay, all right.
All right, are we ready to take a vote on section three, Article Three?
Move to approve?
All right, Bob, Sean moves to approve, we have a second.
Do we have any amendments in there? I forget.
Is that what, who?
Were there any amendments? Were there any amendments? I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, no, none?
Well, the only one was the carryover from two that I had read into the record previously, the standard for zoning appeals board decision.
Okay, all right, seconded by Ms. Malley, all in favor?
Aye.
Article Three is approved. The planning commission at this time is in recess for a little while, we need bathroom breaks and a chance to eat, this is, we have four sections to go, this is going to be a marathon session. Sean Delagloria, can you hold up with us now? Do we need anything special to assist you?
No, I'm, I'm getting ready.
You're getting ready, I'm proud of you.